Good morning. Thank you for being here for our regularly scheduled briefing. We're joined by councilmembers Bagshaw, Juarez, Herbald, Peterson, and Gonzalez. And welcome to the table, Councilmember Peterson. Glad to have you. Thanks for the gifts. He bears gifts when he comes. Thank you for that. Let's go around the room. If there's no objection, the...
That every Monday, by the way.
I'm sorry?
We expect this every Monday.
Yeah, D4. This is how we roll here, okay?
If there's no objection, the minutes of the November 25, 2019, meeting will be approved. There are no objections. The minutes are being approved. And if there's no objection, item number three on our agenda, which is our state legislative session update, will be canceled and rescheduled for next Monday. We've been told by the team that there's still a few language issues that are being worked out, and the final product wasn't quite ready, but it should be ready in the middle of this week. And again, thanks for all of you giving some input, and it's a great document. I've looked at a short draft of it, but it wasn't ready for briefing today, so we will dispense with that item on today's agenda. Let me give a brief. Let's just go around the table and do a preview of today's full council actions. Nothing up for vote from the Governing, Security, and Technology Committee. We do meet tomorrow morning at 9:30, and we have three agenda items. The first one is an ordinance relating to gifts and donations to the city. It's a discussion and potential vote on our ability to, and this is coming out of Law Department, I want to thank them for it, our ability to receive, to look at what was once called the Gift Catalog that's been around since the '80s, and to revise that to allow a little, I'll say, looser restrictions on our ability and the department's ability to accept gifts. So that will be called the Law Donation Fund Council Bill. The second item is a resolution on our technology matching funds. We've been doing that for a number of years, and I want to thank the council for all the work helping communities get technology, particularly underrepresented communities, get technology matching funds, and we're looking at those procedures to see if there's a way we could expedite it. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the community and the department that from the time we fund it and the time it actually gets to the communities, it takes a much longer time. The department has some ideas on how they could accelerate that process a little bit. And the last item is Seattle City Light easement that we will look, it's a modification with King County Bill, and we're doing that because of Councilmember Mesquita's absence, and we agreed to take that on for them, and that's pretty straightforward legislation on the acceptance of an easement. Okay, those are the three things we'll look at tomorrow morning, and Councilmember Bagshaw, you have the floor.
Thank you. Nothing from the Finance and Neighborhood Committee on this afternoon's business, but I want to let everybody know that we have two final finance committees between now and two weeks and three days, which will be the last time that I will be on this council with you. But on this Thursday, December 5, at 9:30 a.m., we've got a number of things, including the fourth quarter supplemental. We accept the grants, and we also have supplemental ordinance. That's important, I believe, Councilmember Harrell, that you've got another commitment with the Regional Policy Committee that day over at King County. Appreciate that very much. You're attending that, so it'll be Councilmember Gonzalez, me, and anybody else who wants to join us. We've got appointments to Historic Seattle, four reappointments to Seattle-Chinatown International District PDA, two reappointments to the Pike Place Market PDA, two Historic Preservation Landmark ordinances, Highland Apartments, and the, do you pronounce it, Blight's Funeral Home? B-L-E-I-T-Z? I don't know how it's pronounced. I've seen it for all these years. But we also have an FAS ordinance authorizing the sale of five snippet properties in West Seattle. I don't know if this is something that you've been engaged in, Councilmember Herbald. We've got our SDHR ordinance that will authorize the cost of living increase, and then, as I mentioned, the fourth quarter supplemental, which is very important. I want to acknowledge and say thank you to my King County Council colleagues, Councilmember Jeanne Cole Wells, Councilmember Rod Dembowski, all the council's central staff, folks in the Executive's Office, and especially to our Mayor's Office, Tess Colby, a number of folks. We had a two-hour and 40-minute conversation, conference call, Wednesday night before Thanksgiving on the regional governance. We're so close to having a deal struck that we can move forward. I think I'm scheduled to talk with Councilmember Gonzalez later today, Councilmember Herbald, just to give you an update on where the amendments are going at this point. And I know that it's been long and tedious for a lot of people, but I really want to acknowledge that the King County central staff, along with Jeff Sims and Tracy Ratsliff in our office, have done tremendous work. And this is like a 60-some-page document that has been revised and amended and brought forward again, so all's good. We're moving forward with that, and then I'll have a full briefing with our special homelessness committee sometime next week. Very good. Thanks.
So I thought that, I have to really look at the schedule. I thought that after the 9:30 meeting Thursday, we had a special meeting Thursday on homelessness. Am I incorrect on that?
We have that on the calendar.
And I thought we were adopting what was going to take place there. Am I wrong on that?
Well, I have been, if that is the case, that is good news. But I had been told by my staff that they had connected with your offices, and that I was the only one that was going to be able to attend that meeting, which seemed a little silly to have just me there since I've been involved in this.
Select, your term with the Select Committee on homelessness.
This Thursday afternoon.
Oh, that I don't know.
Okay, so we'll double-check that, but I didn't, I thought it would be a little unreasonable to ask people to come brief if I was the only one that was going to be here.
I see. So we'll put some effort behind that. So just to be clear, what I assumed before this discussion was, the King County Committee meeting on homelessness on the regional issue was to take place Thursday morning, and I thought, at 9:30, and then later in our afternoon, that afternoon, we were going to adopt the plan as a select committee, and I didn't know about the lack of attendance there. So let's see what we could do there.
Great, because it's really important that we're able to be in sync with King County on this, and if there are, obviously, if there are questions and concerns, we need to address those and bring amendments forward. So King County, essentially, we're trying to adopt the same document, one from their side and also from our side, but let's double-check that, that attendance on Thursday afternoon. We do have time next week to have a special committee meeting, or it could go directly to our council, but let's make sure we've got people there to hear it.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Bagshaw, as it relates to the timing of a potential Select Committee on Housing Affordability and Homelessness, is, I have a hold on my calendar for Thursday, the 5th of December, but I am a little concerned about how we get to a place as a Seattle City Council to agree with whatever product we anticipate coming out of the King County Council with such a quick turnaround. So while I appreciate the intent and the desire to try to, you know, avoid avoidable delay, I also don't want us to be put in a position to unnecessarily rush our decision-making process and our review of whatever it is King County Council is considering this week. I know personally I have not had an opportunity to really take a look at how the proposals from King County Council have evolved in the weeks that we have been mired in our own city budget process. So just want to express that I'm ready to sort of roll up my sleeves and do the work that needs to be done this week to be ready in time for an afternoon meeting on December 5. But if there is an opportunity to schedule a Select Committee on this issue early next week or next week, to me, that seems like it would be a much more judicious approach from my perspective. But I would, of course, defer to the three co-chairs of the Select Committee and Council President's office on figuring out what the appropriate timing is. And Councilmember Bagshaw, if there is a timing concern that you have as it relates to when we schedule this meeting, I would really appreciate an opportunity to hear that now so that we all collectively have an opportunity to weigh that as we look at our schedules and potentially rearranging our schedules to accommodate a Select Committee.
Great. Well, so backing up, our last committee meeting here is December 16, so it's Monday, two weeks away from today. We're hopeful that, assuming that everybody concurs that we have gotten as far as we can go on this governance document, that I would like to approve it on the 16th. Otherwise, we start all over with a new council and having to the history that we have gone through in the last year and a half. So the goal here, after the amount of time that we have been working with negotiating within the city of Seattle, then with King County, is if there is anything that has, we have not seen at this point, I really want to make sure that you have an opportunity to talk to me about it. There is a one-pager that I sent around this weekend that included Councilmember Cole Wells' latest striker, the work that we did last Wednesday, and as I say, that was a very lengthy negotiating, negotiation going through the 60 pages of the document. And I believe that we were 95% there between the city and the county last Wednesday. Then there was some exchanges over the weekend. My understanding now is that we have, I mean, just overview, we've got the governing board, it's now going to be an inter-local agreement that's based upon a joint-agency type of governance structure, that the governing committee will have three people from the city of Seattle, the mayor, and two councilmembers, three people from King County, the executive and two King County councilmembers, three members of the Sound Cities Association, and three people with lived experience to be appointed by organizations and recommended by organizations that have, would be either things like the Health Committee, our providers will be recommending the three people with lived experience. Then we will have the Implementation Board, and that's what we have all been talking about for the last year. That's going to be where the juice is. The Implementation Board will be comprised of roughly a dozen different appointed individuals, and they will have had various experiences depending upon whether they're providers or, again, lived experience or public health. All that is on one sheet of paper, which will be coming your way. Take a look at it. And then plus, I am happy to provide you with all of the red lines if you're interested to see the document as it has unfolded over the last month. So you can start with the one-pager, and then we will back up everything that you need.
Yeah, and I do, I did receive the email that you sent over the weekend related to what we expect King County to do. I guess my, the concern that I'm flagging is, we never know what's going to happen until it happens, and if King County Council is meeting at 9:30 in the morning on December 5 to go through whatever final proposals, amendments, strikers, et cetera, I have a, some anxiety about walking into a meeting here in these chambers just several, maybe just a couple hours after they're done with their deliberations, and trying to go through the exercise of reconciling what may have changed, what didn't change, and what the impacts of those modifications might be to the overall stated goals of the Regional Governance Authority and the structure, which, you know, I think all of us are very interested in and certainly don't have the granular detail that I think is necessary at this point to make those decisions. So it sounds like we might have an opportunity to enter into more thoughtful deliberations around what might come out of the King County Council sometime next week in time for a full council vote on December 16. And that's really what I'm trying to get a sense of so that, so that we on this city council don't feel like we're being jammed by the King County process.
So I think what's going to happen, and if we can have that meeting on Thursday afternoon, there's no vote, but it would be a briefing on everything that has happened to date and could come out of King County. So if those of us who are here this Thursday could attend that meeting as we had planned, then we can get that full briefing and learn more about what just happened in King County.
Sure.
And that gives us the weekend, it's not like this is foreign to us to be able to be nimble, but I hear what you're saying loud and clear. If there's something that is causing consternation, we definitely need to be able to dive in on it.
Yeah, and we think staff will be prepared to give us, walk us through that briefing on Thursday afternoon if we proceed on Thursday afternoon with a briefing and discussion.
Correct. That's the idea, is that we would have Tess here. I had hoped that the group that, your member meeting, Mark Downs, and others were going to be here, Anna Leeve, to provide us how far along they are with what they call the RAP, the Action Plan. Apparently, they were not available to come this Thursday. I'm disappointed in that, but Tess, I'm sure will be able to fill us in.
And Tess, is Tess Colby from the Mayor's Office?
Correct.
Right, so I'm more specifically interested in our staff, our council central staff being available. So while I appreciate Tess's work for the Mayor's Office, I do think it's important for us to have our council central staff in a position where they're ready to brief us from a council perspective on the proposal.
Good. And Jeff Sims and Tracy Ratsliff have been at virtually every meeting that we've had in the last many months, even in the midst of budget. They have been deeply engaged in this, and I'm sure that Jeff will be in attendance.
Councilwoman Juarez.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Bagshaw, I think we have some confusion here. My understanding, because I serve on the Regional Policy Committee, that we are meeting this Thursday at 1:00. Councilmember Swatch serves on that committee as well to discuss this issue.
And I was wrong about the timing. I just found this morning, it's 9:30. The Regional Policy Committee is 9:30.
Oh, it's not 1:00. Okay, well, we didn't know that.
Correct. And I was, when I gave you that, that timing and the error, that it was changed to 9:30.
Okay, so this is...
And it is just the RPC, it's not the full County Council.
Okay, so that's it, that's at 9:30 now, not at 1:00, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm along the same lines as Councilmember Gonzalez because this, we started, we had been working on this Regional Governing Authority as a PDA for almost seven months, and now we're going to go to an inter-local agreement, and it has changed at least, what, four times in the last week? And I know that there's strikers coming in, and we have to discuss this as well. So I'm a little bit concerned as well because we were getting phone calls from how we were going to vote, and I'm like, I haven't seen anything since the last thing. And last time I heard, we had a PDA, and I thought we were okay. The city of Seattle is putting in $73 million, and I understand that some of the outlying cities have concerns, but I know one of the, one of the points that I was causing some concern is how the votes, whether or not they will be weighted like they are in the RPC.
Yeah, they're not going to be weighted. Not weighted.
Okay, well...
At least as proposed.
As proposed.
As proposed, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think we're going to get to a weighted vote.
Okay, well, this just underscores what I'm trying to say. There's a lot of moving pieces, and it's Monday at not even 10:00, so I'm having the sense that tomorrow at this time, it'll be different again. So we will meet at 9:30 at RPC, and then we'll come over here Thursday at 1:00. We'll come back at 1:00 here.
So...
If indeed we are looking at something more correct.
Correct. But now, I mean, as we're, I'm listening to all of us, I, more than ever, I think we need to have that briefing Thursday afternoon. So I will double-check everybody's calendar again. My staff told me first thing this morning that I was the only one that was going to be able to attend Thursday afternoon. So we'll circle the wagons again and see if we can reprioritize this.
I think that's key, is us ensuring that our staff is prioritizing this in the scheduling queue.
Good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good. Well, thank you, and happy to have any individual meetings with you between now and Thursday. Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Just to murky it up a little more, when the, excuse, when the RPC meets Thursday, assuming there's a vote, and that is an assumption, a vote comes out of that, an affirmative vote, then it goes to where and when? It goes to the full council?
King County Council.
And would that be the following what? I'm trying to look at the timing as to when it relates to us and what the final product, because that's still a committee vote.
Correct. My understanding is it's going to go directly to the King County Council on the next Monday, so...
That's the ninth?
So that's, is it today's?
The ninth?
Yes.
If they meet on the 5th?
The 5th, right. And I believe that's one of their last full council meetings.
Okay, so I'll do some digging with, I'm having OIR look at this as well in addition to our central staff. So all great issues, so let's look at it, make sure that our policy positions are protected in that process. A little unorth, it's...
Oh, it's very, I mean, at this point, too, the way that it's been compressed, you know, I appreciate very much people's concerns, and also knowing that we've had however many regular briefings on this as it's gone along, the goal here is to get the governing committee in place so we can actually do the work that we've all been talking about for the last year, but it's complicated.
The reason I ask the questions is that if, in fact, the county council has adopted a final piece of legislation Monday, and we're meeting after the fact, it seems like it's almost a mood issue to some extent.
Well, I think that...
We have to adopt something as well, but...
Correct, but...
We're losing our ability to try to influence that process as well, and many of us have friends on that council as well.
That's why I need to have you.
So, okay, I think we understand the issue and the timing of it. You finished?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you, finally.
Councilwoman Juarez.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Okay, so our next Civic Development, Public Assets, and Native Communities Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December 4, at 2:00. It's a filled agenda that includes, number one, we'll consider several parks-related appointments in addition, several appointments to our new Central Waterfront Oversight Committee. There are 19 members total, 14 of which are, we will do those appointments. Number two, a briefing from Director Nellums from Seattle Center on our previously approved Monorail Orca legislation passed in September. He will provide an updated report on the final concessions agreement signed between the Seattle Monorail Services and the city. Second, we will consider parks legislation that will authorize acquisition of rural property to Terry, I'm going to just get this right, Terry Pettis Park on Lake Union for open space, park, and recreation purposes. And lastly, we will consider waterfront legislation authorizing a funding agreement and a future construction agreement between the city and the Seattle Aquarium Society for a new aquarium facility called the Ocean Pavilion. I'm going to give you a quick briefing on what's going on with Sound Transit. I had staff attend the I-976 hearing last Tuesday in King County Superior Court. The case, led by C.L. King County and Garfield County Transportation Authority and a coalition of other groups, argued to establish a temporary injunction which would prevent the initiative from taking effect. They argued the fact that once the money is gone, is gone, causing irreparable harm. In addition, the attorneys argued that not only did the ballot language mislead voters, but also I-976 violates multiple parts of the state constitution. I want to thank Nagin Kamkar. She went to court on our behalf, and I was very proud of her. She was giving me live updated texts as she was watching. As you heard, Judge Ferguson issued an injunction, which is great news, as it permits more time for legal arguments to be addressed. As far as committees and other news, as a member of Sound Transit Board, I'll be attending the Rider Experience Operations Committee this Thursday, and as I just shared, I serve on the Regional Policy Council with Councilmember Swat, and thank you for letting me know, Councilmember Bagshaw, that I thought that meeting was at 1:00, but I hear it's at 9:30. It's okay. So that's going to change a lot, and I'm just going to briefly say this, and again, in supporting what Councilmember Gonzalez said, is that we have been briefed, I know now, I have been briefed five times on the PDA model, and now we're going to go to an ILA model. And I know that we've had some different issues about the voting and whether it's weighted or whether it's not weighted, so I look forward to the documents and the new drafts. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Councilwoman Juarez. Councilmember Herbald?
Thank you so much. The next Civil Rights Utilities Economic Development and Arts Committee meeting is next Tuesday, December 10. That will be the last one of the year. And I'll have more to share with you about that meeting next Monday. There are no items on the full council agenda from the Civil Rights Utilities Economic Development Arts Committee today. As far as meetings coming up this week, on Wednesday, I have a Puget Sound Economic Development District Board meeting. Thursday, I did have a special RTC meeting, Regional Transit Committee meeting regarding the Metro Transit Strategic Plan and Metro Mobility Framework, but it sounds like I will be reprioritizing my attendance at that meeting to attend instead a Select Committee on Homelessness here at the city council. Other community events coming up this week, we have a Thursday morning meeting with the Roxhill Elementary students for a civic engagement program called Politicizing Our Youth. And then on Sunday, I will be, actually, it's Saturday, sorry, Saturday, I'll be attending an event in South Park with Moms Rising, Families of Color Seattle, and Westside Baby for a community baby shower to celebrate Washington State's new paid family and medical leave program. And this will be happening at the South Park Hall from 3:00 to 5:00 on Saturday.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald. Councilmember Peterson?
Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As the newly-elected council member for District 4, I'm honored to be at the table here with you today and look forward to working with all of you. But I've got some tokens of my appreciation, which I'll get to in a minute, but first, to the job here. On the full council agenda, there are no items from the Planning, Land Use, and Zoning Committee. In terms of the next PLUS Committee, it was originally scheduled for December 4, but I've canceled that meeting. There are no items that were coming there. However, we will have the meeting as scheduled for Wednesday, December 18, at 9:30 in the morning. In terms of stuff going on in District 4, I want to highlight a couple things. There was a tragic traffic accident this past Friday afternoon, as reported by the Seattle Times. A vehicle was heading northbound on Aurora, and just north of the bridge ended up on the sidewalk near 39th Street, killing one person instantly, and then another person just died recently, and there are two others who are injured. I conferred with the Police Department, with Seattle Department of Transportation. I went out to the scene as well. Our police actually captured a suspect who allegedly fled from the scene. So our hearts go out to the victims of that, and I'm grateful for the police officers for their rapid response. On a much lighter note, District 4 is home to several holiday events, so I want to highlight a couple. Roosevelt High School plays every year, their rendition of Duke Ellington's Jazz Nutcracker, and that'll be December 7 and 8 at Roosevelt High School, and you can get info at rooseveltjazz.org. Also, the world-famous Candy Cane Lane on northeast Ravenna Boulevard and Park Road Northeast will be glowing with holiday lights again this year. It's actually their 70th anniversary, 70 years, displaying their holiday spirit. People from all over come there, so I hope you join them Saturday, December 7. And so for these welcoming gifts here, we've got a coffee mug from Bulldog News from the Ave in the University District, and another D4 neighborhood, Eastlake. We've got some famous carrot cake from 14 Carrot Cafe. I, to be transparent, I ended up eating two pieces last night as I was cutting this up for you, but there's still enough for everybody, and so please enjoy the mug and the cake. You can keep the bowl, but nobody else can.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you. Good morning. Nothing on this afternoon's agenda from the Gender Equity, Save Communities, New Americans, and Education Committee. I do have a regional committee to attend this week. I will be at the Puget Sound Regional Council's Operations Committee, which starts at 9:00 a.m., and am looking forward to representing the city of Seattle there. In the evening on December 5, Thursday, this is just another reminder that my committee will be having a special committee meeting. It's a joint committee meeting with the Community Police Commission and with the Labor Relations Policy Committee to hear public testimony on the impending labor negotiations with the Seattle Police Officers Guild. So this is our, a meeting that will fulfill our statutory requirement to hold a public hearing jointly with the Community Police Commission to hear from the public about any ongoing issues related to, or concerns related with the SPOG Collective Bargaining Agreement. So that meeting will start promptly at 5:30 p.m. The agenda has been published. We will hear three very short presentations. We will start with the Office of Police Accountability and hear from them any information that they believe is relevant to us as council members and to the general public. We'll then shift over to the Office of Inspector General, hear a quick, short presentation from them, and we'll end presentations with a presentation from the Community Police Commission as it relates to the SPOG contract. And then we will open up the public hearing, and we will go as long as we need to, to hear from everybody who is in attendance and has signed up to provide us public testimony on that particular issue. So looking forward to hosting that here in Chambers, December 5, at 5:30 p.m. That's this Thursday. We did have, the Clerk's Office did send out a call-in notice for your calendar, and if you could let us know if you're able to attend, we would greatly appreciate it. I do hope that we have as many people in attendance as possible in terms of council members to make sure we can hear on the, hear from the public directly on this really important issue that will be of critical importance to the city council next year as we enter. as we enter into negotiations with SPOG on any and all remaining issues in the collective bargaining agreement. And then next, I will be on Saturday. I have the opportunity and the pleasure to join the League of Women Voters at their advocacy training event, which will be happening at the Seattle First Baptist Church at 1111 Harvard Avenue, and I'm excited to join them there and be their keynote speaker to talk to those folks about what it means to continue to engage in advocacy. And of course, we'll be taking up the subject of my Clean Campaigns Act and hoping to be able to continue to share with the general public the various components of that piece of legislation. And to that end, just another reminder that next week on December 11th, my committee will have its regularly scheduled meeting at 9:30 a.m. We will be taking up a few appointments, some to the Immigrant Refugee Commission, others to the Families Education Preschool Promise Levy Oversight Committee, mouthful. And then we will end that meeting with a panel discussion, just a briefing and discussion with expert panels and council central staff. Lish Whitson will be with us at the table as well to give us a first briefing on the various components of the Clean Campaigns Act. So invite all of you to join us at 9:30 a.m. I'm hoping that we can start the presentation and the panel, and the panel on the Clean Campaigns Act by about 10:00 in the morning. So if you are interested in joining us, please feel free to do so. I'm really excited about hosting that conversation, my committee, next week, Wednesday, December 11th. That is it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Council President. The Sustainability in Transportation Committee has eight items on this afternoon's agenda. These are all appointments, two each, well, let's see, there's six of them are reappointments and two appointments. Two each to the Bike Advisory Board, the Transit Advisory Board, the Levy to Move Seattle Oversight Board, those are all reappointments, and then two to the Urban Forest Recommission. That's it for this afternoon's agenda. The Sustainability in Transportation Committee will have a meeting tomorrow at a regularly scheduled time from, what is that, 2:00 to 4:00, I guess? And two items on that agenda, we will be taking up and hopefully voting on the final action for a street vacation up near Harborview, something that's been in the works for a number of years. And then we will get a briefing from ASTOT on the Del Ridge Rapid Ride H-line. And that'll be it for tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien.
I'll mention one other thing briefly. There is an RTC meeting on Thursday afternoon, which I believe will conflict with our meeting that we were discussing earlier, that Councilmember Herbl also mentioned. I'll work with you, Councilmember Bagshaw. There is hopefully final action on a, kind of an equity framework, mobility framework for Metro's rollout, and I may work with others because I've been fully briefed on a lot of the work that's been happening at the county, although, as others have mentioned, that things, a lot of things could happen between now and Thursday. But I'm probably going to plan to be at the RTC meeting to represent the city over there and not be here, but we'll see what's happening and plan that by here.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Councilmember O'Brien. I know we're all juggling so many things these last couple of weeks, so what I'd like to do is maybe spend 20 minutes with you in the next couple of days so I can give you a briefing on what happened over the weekend. And then you'll, you'll have a grounding in it, so at least I know that you're still feeling secure and are moving forward with this.
The other thing happening, I think there's a PSRC Executive Committee meeting in the morning, but there's a PSRC Growth Management Policy Board meeting in the afternoon. I think that's from 1:00 to 3:00, which will butt up right against the RTC meeting, and that's the final Growth Management Policy Board meeting of the year. And the plan is to adopt Vision 2050 at that meeting. Council President Harrell, I believe you're hopefully going to be in attendance, at least for part of that, too. And so that's also a meeting that I really can't miss, so I'll be at that one.
That was the problem, I think, that we had, and assumed that Councilmember Peterson may be assuming that seat from Councilmember Pacheco, whether or not that's the case or not. But I think that as we were going around the other eight council members, that there was nobody but me that was going to be there. So I appreciate the fact that you can juggle this, and I also understand how important these other policy committees are, so we'll figure out what we need to do. Thanks.
Okay. And Councilwoman Peterson, I talked to you offline about, we realize you're, I don't say illiquid, but you haven't had the, all of the briefings for some of the meetings for this last month that you've sort of been tossed into, and so I understand your position, but let's, let's talk about some scheduling issues.
Yep.
Please appreciate your flexibility. Okay. All right. So that's that. So let's move into executive session if we're finished with our preview of today's full council action. So as presiding officer, I'm announcing that we will convene in executive session. The purpose of this executive session is to discuss pending potential actual litigation. These sessions are an opportunity for us to discuss confidential legal matters as authorized by law. However, a legal monitor from the city attorney's office is always present to make sure we reserve questions of public policy in our open, public, transparent sessions. I expect this session to last for 30 minutes, so that'll be to 10:42 a.m. And if it goes beyond that period, I'll announce its expected continuation or extension in public session. With that, let's secure the room.